Good morning, everyone. My name is Elizabeth Glidden. And when we begin our official meeting, I will be chairing our meeting today as our council president is out of town on city business. But we often begin our meetings with honorary presentations, and we have two today. And the first will be presented by my colleague, Councilmember Lisa Goodman, and it is to recognize the anniversary of the Lake and Hill Press. Well, thank you, Council Vice President Glidden, for allowing me to come up and do this. And I want to ask all of the people who came for this presentation to come on up.
You can come on both sides?
Right. You can come on both sides. It's very cute. Okay. So just for my colleagues' knowledge, The Hill and Lake Press is a community newspaper, not unlike many that are in the wards that you represent. What makes this paper really unique is its longevity and the fact that it draws such passion from people in the community, and people just wait to get it on a monthly basis. It's been an ongoing concern for 40 years as a nonprofit and operates on a very limited budget. Given the nature of this kind of journalism, and it's so difficult to continue these papers, I wanted to do something to honor their commitment today. So my office, in conjunction with every person standing up here pretty much, had a hand in writing this resolution, coordinated by Patrick Sadler in my office. So I'm going to go ahead and read the resolution and then ask Jim and Wynne if they want to say a few words. "Celebrating the 40th year anniversary of The Hill and Lake Press. Whereas in January 1976, East Isles neighbors Wynne and Binky Rockwell, who are here, and Carol Loenthal, published the inaugural issue of the East Isles Residents Association News for the East Isles Residents Association. Whereas Lowry Hill residents Jim and Susan Lenfestie, who are also here, seeking a better way to get information to the neighborhood, joined with EIRA News to create a joint monthly newspaper. And in March 1976, the first issue of The Hill and Lake Press was published with Wynne Rockwell and Jim Lenfestie as the community editors. And whereas in July 1976, the Kenwood Isles Neighborhood Association joined the newspaper with John Wesby as their community editor. And in January of 1979, the Cedar Isles Dean Neighborhood joined The Hill and Lake Press with Rhoda Lewin as community editor, thus completing coverage of the four neighborhoods around Lake of the Isles and Cedar Lake that continues to this day. And whereas over 800 Hill and Lake residents have volunteered during the past 40 years to provide in-depth coverage for their neighbors of issues both big and small, upholding Hill and Lake Press's mottoes where the Biggies left off. And whereas in 1978, The Hill and Lake Press published the first kids' issue, organized by Holly Lewis, and during the next two decades, over 400 children learned newspaper skills and the importance of community. And whereas The Hill and Lake Press has been the recipient of numerous awards from the Neighborhood Press Association, including Best Newspaper, Best Editorial Coverage on a Continuing Basis, Best Graphic Unit, Best Feature Article, Best Ongoing Column, and Best In-Depth Investigation. And whereas in the spring of 2002, with volunteer efforts waning, Jean Dietrich, assisted by Dorothy Childers, Jane Johnson, and Joyce Murphy, became the managing editor, a position she retains to this day, she's also here, overseeing articles, art, photography, advertising, printing and distribution of 6,000 papers to individual households and local businesses each month. And whereas the community owes a debt of gratitude to the many hundreds of dedicated volunteers who have contributed to The Hill and Lake Press over the past 40 years and who continue to keep it vibrant. Therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council hereby acknowledge and celebrate The Hill and Lake Press, recognizing the important role neighborhood community newspapers play in contributing to the interconnectedness of our city and our communities." Congratulations.
Hi. I'm Jim Lenfestie. You get to a certain age, and there are a lot of 40th anniversaries, and this is one for sure that we thought would pass without comment, except that Michael Wilson here just became dedicated to telling the story of our 40th anniversary and all the work that we did, which we just did for joy and for the purpose of communication in the small community. We came up with the idea where the Biggies leave off underneath the umbrella of the Star Tribune, and now, of course, Ben Post and others, there's still, and there always is need for communication on the neighborhood level. We didn't have it then. We created this to do it. It's still going on. All the neighborhoods need it underneath those levels. And so we were just, it was always fun to make this happen.
Thanks, Jim. My name's Wynne Rockwell, and as you heard, Jim and I were together with Susan and Binky.
We were just kind of there.
And we were just serving coffee.
In getting the newspaper started. And I just want to add one thing. With respect to the children's issue, there was an article in the issue by one of the children reporting on a presentation that Jim Lenfestie had made, in which he said there are three essential elements for being a newspaper person. You need a pad, you need a pen, and you need a pair of sunglasses. And so that's Jim Lenfestie, sort of in a nutshell. So I wanted the record to reflect that if you don't have a pair of sunglasses, you're really not a reporter. Lisa, thank you so much.
Congratulations. Thank you. All right. And we have a second presentation, and I'm going to invite my colleague Alondra Kano to please come down, and this is Recognizing Haitian Flag Day.
Good morning, everybody. We are joined here today by our wonderful Ninth Ward resident, Rose, who's one of the Haitian leaders in Minnesota. And if you, do you want to come help her hold the flag, maybe? Okay. So we will go ahead and read this resolution, and then afterwards, if you wouldn't mind, sharing a couple of words with our community. So this is Recognizing Haitian Flag Day. Whereas in 1492, the indigenous Taino people discovered the lost mercenary Christopher Columbus off the coast of what was known then and now as Haiti, a name deriving from the Arawak language and one which was restored after independence was one from the French. Whereas, after a painful history of indigenous genocide and cruel exploitation of the labor of enslaved African peoples on vast sugar and coffee plantations that transferred significant wealth to European colonial powers, Haiti became the only nation in the Western Hemisphere to defeat three European empires and remains the only nation in the world established as a result of a successful revolutionary uprising of enslaved African people. Whereas, hundreds of Haitians have made the Twin Cities their home, often as refugees, and the civically engaged community is a unique part of the diversity of Minneapolis, contributing to our vibrant arts, musical scene, and local business community. Whereas, when Haiti was hit by a devastating earthquake in 2010, the Haitian diaspora community in Minneapolis and around the world took action, gathering resources and supplies to send home, and the local Haitian community created the nonprofit Haitian Community of Minnesota to align efforts to the earthquake relief and have continued to provide services to local Haitian families through this organization. And whereas, the nation of Haiti and Haitian people all over the world celebrate Haitian Flag Day each year on May 18, which commemorates the adoption of the flag at the 1803 Arché Haye Conference and provides an opportunity for the Haitian community to come together to celebrate and share their history and culture. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of Minneapolis that May 18, 2016, shall be recognized as Haitian Flag in Minneapolis.
So tell us a little bit more about this.
My name, excuse me, my name is Woz Badamasi, and I'm the founder of Haitian Community of Minnesota. So we're not, we're not a big group, we're not a big group, but I was very excited and happy that you guys stood there. And I hope since May it's incoming for the Flag Day, so we can be able to have that day. Because like, you know, as Haitian we understand, we don't have a lot of program, not even a restaurant we don't have yet. But I was very happy that Councilor Olendia Kano and Aisha Gomez accept to help us, you know, to help us to, when I asked, and then to have the flag represented, and then that day be legal for us in May 18. And you all know that, you know, the flag is February 12, 1804, so that's when the flag was created. And Catherine LaFleur was the one that saw the flag, and the flag before was black and red. And then after Givalier left and everything, so we come back to red and blue, red, white and blue. And thank you, and I'm very happy about that. Thank you very much.
I am calling this meeting to order, and I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Frye.
Here.
Paul Masano.
Here.
Gordon.
Here.
Kano.
Here.
Reich.
Here.
Bender.
Here.
Yang.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Quincy.
Here.
Worsami.
Present.
Goodman.
Present.
President Johnson is absent. Vice President Glidden.
Here.
There are 12 members present.
Thank you. And I'll note that President Johnson is out of the, out of town on city business for this meeting. Our next item is adoption of the agenda, and I understand Councilmember Kano has a motion to amend the agenda to include, under the order of resolutions, a resolution recognizing Haitian Flag Day. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is adopted. And is there a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
Move adoption.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion is adopted. Third item on the agenda is acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of April 29, 2016.
Move acceptance.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion is adopted. Next, referral petitions, communications, and reports to the proper committees.
Move referral.
And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is adopted. Next, return to the reports of standing committees, and the first is Councilmember Goodman, Chair of the Community Development Regulatory Services Committee, to present that report.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. There are 11 items on our agenda for approval this morning. Items one and two are land sales. Item three is a bond issuance. Item four and five include the Viking Bar and the regular liquor business and gambling licenses. Item eight is a rental license dwelling condition stipulation. Item seven is a grant application to the federal government. Item eight are our final comments on our low-income housing tax credit procedural manual and qualified allocation plan. Item number nine is making six appointments to the Public Housing Authority Board of Directors, two new reappointments, and four new appointments. Item number 10 is the draft of our Affordable Housing Trust Fund, RFP, and 11 is a contract with Hennepin County. With that, I'll move items one through 11 for approval this morning.
All right. Councilmember Goodman has moved items one through 11. Any discussion? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Frye.
Aye.
Paul Masano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Vice President Glidden.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
Thank you. Next, we have the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee with that committee's chair, Councilmember Gordon, to present the report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee is bringing forward three items for approval. The first is passage of an ordinance amending Title III, Chapter 59 of our Code of Ordinances relating to air pollution and environmental protection. This is amending provisions related to our after-hours work permits. Second item is accepting a grant from the Minnesota Department of Health in the amount of $1,296,559 over five years for family home visiting services. And the third item is a resolution accepting a donation from the Friends of the Skyway Senior Center, up to $90,000 to support the Skyway Senior Center operating expenses. I'll move all three items for approval.
Thank you. Councilmember Gordon has moved items one through three. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, please say aye. Oh, excuse me. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Frye.
Aye.
Paul Masano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Vice President Glidden.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
Thank you. Next, we have the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee with that committee's chair, Councilmember Gordon, to present the report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee is bringing forward three items for approval. The first is passage of an ordinance amending Title III, Chapter 59 of our Code of Ordinances relating to air pollution and environmental protection. This is amending provisions related to our after-hours work permits. Second item is accepting a grant from the Minnesota Department of Health in the amount of $1,296,559 over five years for family home visiting services. And the third item is a resolution accepting a donation from the Friends of the Skyway Senior Center, up to $90,000 to support the Skyway Senior Center operating expenses. I'll move all three items for approval.
Thank you. Councilmember Gordon has moved items one through three. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, please say aye. Oh, excuse me. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Frye.
Aye.
Paul Masano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Vice President Glidden.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
Okay. So we have items number two and number three, and I'm going to call in Councilmember Quincy and see if he has a motion on those.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The items number two and three are both related to contract for services at the stadium. But in researching the issue a little bit, the finance staff realized, of course, that there's not one entity, there are two separate entities, so SMG is the correct entity that the contract should be made with as the operator of the stadium. So that's, those are the two amendments that I would be happy to make at this time.
Okay. And just a question to the clerk. Can I take both of those amendments as one item and have us vote on the amendments?
Absolutely.
All right. Then on items two and three, as amended, can we just can vote on the amendment and then we'll do the roll call? Is that what I do?
Madam President, if everyone's in agreement, I can just call the roll, and we'll take those motions as amended.
Okay. Then let's do that. Will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Frye.
Aye.
Paul Masano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Vice President Glidden.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
Okay. So we have items number two and number three, and I'm going to call in Councilmember Quincy and see if he has a motion on those.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The items number two and three are both related to contract for services at the stadium. But in researching the issue a little bit, the finance staff realized, of course, that there's not one entity, there are two separate entities, so SMG is the correct entity that the contract should be made with as the operator of the stadium. So that's, those are the two amendments that I would be happy to make at this time.
Okay. And just a question to the clerk. Can I take both of those amendments as one item and have us vote on the amendments?
Absolutely.
All right. Then on items two and three, as amended, can we just can vote on the amendment and then we'll do the roll call? Is that what I do?
Madam President, if everyone's in agreement, I can just call the roll, and we'll take those motions as amended.
Okay. Then let's do that. Will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Frye.
Aye.
Paul Masano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Vice President Glidden.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
Okay. Those items are adopted as amended. Next, we have the Taxes Committee with Councilmember Worsami, the Chair of that committee, to present the report.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. We have two items from the Tax Committee report. The first item is passage of a resolution approving Board of Appeal and Equalization, and the second item is directing staff to research ways to ensure Minneapolis residents are aware of and able to apply for state tax relief programs, and I happily move both items for approval.
Thank you. Councilmember Worsami has moved both items. Any discussion? Seeing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Frye.
Aye.
Paul Masano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Vice President Glidden.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
Thank you. Those items are adopted. Next, we have the Transportation and Public Works Committee with Councilmember Reich, the Chair of that committee, to present the report.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. We have 14 items coming from the committee today. Item one is the I-35 Transit Access Project Municipal Consent. Item two is the Washington Avenue Reconstruction and Streetscape from Hennepin Avenue to Fifth Avenue South, and that's for project approval, assessment, and areaway abandonment. Item three is an automatic vehicle management policy. It's adopting a policy for our fleet vehicles. Item four is a water service line repair assessment reduction for a particular address that's listed. Item five is an agreement with the Minnesota Department of Transportation to transfer soil stockpiles. Item six is a supplemental agreement for the ABC Ramp Management Agreement with the State of Minnesota, and that's to allow for fireworks. Item seven is a contract amendment with InControl Incorporated for de-watering plant software changes. Item eight is a contract amendment with Kale America for on-street parking system. Item nine is a contract amendment for conurbation for the Niklet Mall project management. Item 10 is the 18th Avenue North Reconstruction Project variance request, and that's due to some local physical conditions. Item 11 is the Lake Street Reconstruction Project from Blaisdale Avenue South to Fifth Avenue South, and that's a layout approval and variance request for that project. Item 12 is the traffic zone restrictions and controls for the first quarter of 2016. Item 13 is a bid for 26th Avenue Reconstruction Project, and that's accepting a low bid of Thomas &amp; Sons Construction for that project, the amounts listed. And the following item was a receive-and-file for the organics recycling ad campaign and program rollout status, and it was a pretty thorough report, and it seems like we're in a very robust campaign. With that, Madam Vice President, I move all items for approval.
Thank you. Councilmember Reich has moved all 12 items. Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I'd just like to comment very briefly on item number eight.
Okay. You may go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you to staff. So item number eight is the Washington Avenue Reconstruction, as well as the assessment package, and I want to thank councilmembers who've worked on this over the years, as well as, in some cases, before they were even on the council. I'd like to thank staff, and I would like to thank the businesses that have cooperated through this process, as well as the general public that's accommodating quite a bit of traffic right now through downtown due to some of the closures.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I am going to add myself to make some comments on item number one, which is the 35W Transit Access Project. I will say, I kind of blathered on, I feel like, at the Transportation and Public Works Committee about this, but there are a couple things that were, I still wanted to say. This has been a project that has had a very long shelf life in the city of Minneapolis. The councils, before I was elected, took some actions on this project, which I think is in excess of 20, 20 years old. When I was running for election in 2005, for my first election, this was without a doubt a top issue of that time. It was after the city council had had some divided votes on what should be the layout of what was at that time just called the Access Project, and it was clear that there was division within the residential and business community and within the policymaker community that touched this project on how to move it forward. And I really want to call out and thank two of my colleagues that I worked with from day one on this project, and that is Robert Lilligrin, who was our former Council Vice President, and Peter Weginia, who at that time was a senior aide in Mayor Reibach's office. And I think together we shared some values of wanting to improve the project, but wanting to see how can this project be the best that it could be to serve a combination of community and business interests. And I think in the past generation, there had been a belief that only some of those interests were served. We worked very hard to connect with communities and elected officials all along 35W to build support for what is today going to be the Orange Line Bus Rapid Transit project serving downtown all the way to Lakeville. And we have been able to secure support from all of the communities along that line, strong support for this project and how important it is. We worked really hard to try to understand and respond to the interests of the community, and I thought it was interesting. We just had our Heritage Preservation Awards, and one of those awards went to a resident in the central neighborhood. His name is David Peel, and he lives on what's called the Healy Block. And the Healy Block residents, these is, this is a historic district, they were very engaged in wanting to ensure that this freeway did not move closer to those very important historic properties. And they did an excellent job of engaging elected officials and coming to a resolution on how that would happen. So this has been a project that has continued, I feel like, to thread the needle, but we now have a project that is transit-focused, that is more people-focused, and that is embraced not just by Minneapolis interests, but by interests all along this corridor serving the suburban communities and the city proper. So I feel like that is a win. And really, it's in no small part due to the leadership of two of our legislators from Minneapolis, Senator Scott Dibble and Representative Frank Hornstein, who really provided great guidance and leadership for years and years and years on this project. So what's, what's left, this is this moment of municipal consent, but really, the big moment ahead is how are we going to fund this project? This project is on tap this year at the, at the legislature. We know that it has some support, but we have yet to see a full bonding proposal from the House, and whether the legislature can come together around bonding in a transportation package, and those things are very critical. To put these into more concrete terms for the city of Minneapolis and frankly, the the House and whether the legislature can come together around bonding in a transportation package, and those things are very critical. To put these into more concrete terms for the city of Minneapolis and frankly, the whole region, if this, if this project is not funded in this year, we will go from a four-year project to a seven-year construction project, and it has to do with how multiple construction projects are aligned, and if they don't end up happening in the same time, then we have a very, very long construction season that will be very disruptive to residents, to business, to all the interests around. So, my hope is that we can get the job done, and I wish the best to all those at the Capitol, and I know that many who are working on this project, again, all the way from Minneapolis to Lakeville, have been making their voices heard, that this is an important project, not just for Minneapolis, but for our entire region. So, thank you. And with that, I'm not seeing any further comments, so clerk, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Vice President Glidden.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
Thank you. Next, we have the Ways and Means Report provided by Councilmember Quincy, the chair of that committee.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. 14 items on the Ways and Means Committee report today. The first item is a severance pay for appointed employees' ordinance. Item number two, three, and four are three legal settlements to the city of Minneapolis. Item number five is an agreement with Restorative Justice Community Action, the Restorative Justice Services. Item number six, seven, and eight are three low and low-responsive bids for work related at the, for projects at the Minneapolis Convention Center. Item number nine is the Downtown East Commons Operations Funding and Gift Acceptance, a series of five different actions. Item number 10 is a contract amendment with Digital Health Department for software support, contract amendment with DiRed for interactive voice response system, and a contract amendment with Competitive Edge Software for online incident reporting service. Item number 13 is a contract amendment with Bezotech for site studio 11G project work, and item number 14 is a bid by Wilson Custom Tree for landscape maintenance. Madam Chair, I'd like to move all 14 items, but I'd like to move or comment on number nine, really, briefly before I make that motion.
All right, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The item number nine was a, as, as I said, five actions related to it. This is related to the Downtown East Commons Operations Funding and Gift Acceptance steps. This item was sent forward from the committee without a recommendation, but after speaking with various staff in Public Works, Finance, the mayor's office, and CPED, I was hoping all of the answers and lingering questions from councilmembers may have been addressed, so I would like to move this item with, for approval and encourage all my colleagues to support all 14 items on the Ways and Means Report.
Okay. So, Councilmember Quincy has moved all 14 items, and then I will ask if there is discussion or anybody would like to take something off. Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would not like to take anything off.
Okay. What, which item would you like to comment on?
I would like to comment on item number nine.
Okay.
Briefly.
All right. I'm not seeing anyone else, so go ahead.
Thank you. So, item number nine is the contract for Downtown East and specifically the Commons. I'd just like to discuss very briefly what, what this, these contracts entail. First, we have decided a while ago to go with the conservancy model, which means that neither the park board nor the city will be directly operating and maintaining the space, and it was necessary to have an independent entity that is, that is negotiating and that is working the Commons on a, on a very constant basis, because inevitably, they're going to be dealing with like 15 different entities around there. We've been moving forward with Green Minneapolis for quite some time. Green Minneapolis has done a ton of work to get the framework set up so that once 2017 hits, they can then enter the space, they can start maintaining it, and we can do so in a very efficient manner. However, the contract with Green Minneapolis is not set up yet. So, during the interim time, while we negotiate the contract with Green Minneapolis to arrive at the best possible deal for the city, DID will take it. This just, this makes sense, and I think, once the contract with Green Minneapolis is negotiated, we'll all be glad that we took a brief hiatus until it was signed. So, the second item on there is the, is the $250,000, which is allocated for operations and maintenance of the space in 2016. First of all, the 250,000 has already been allocated to the Commons generally, but specifically to Public Works, so it's simply being redistributed to operations and maintenance from Public Works Improvement, which wasn't necessary. So, it's not like this is money being taken away from anything else. It was already in the mayor's budget. The second piece is that, you know, this, if this is going to be a public space, and I know that my colleagues have advocated fiercely that it should be, and they're right, then inevitably, we are going to need to put in some money as the public. This is the bare minimum needed to get through 2016, and I would strongly urge you to, to vote for it in this instance. So, you know, we could very easily have a totally private space, and that private space could be 100% funded by Wells Fargo and the Vikings and other surrounding entities, but we've chosen definitively to not go that route. And if we're not going to go that route, and we aren't, by the way, that space is going to be publicly accessible 100% of the time, even on Vikings game days, then we will need to put in some public money for operations and maintenance. I believe that the vast majority, the majority of it will be able to collect from private entities down the line. By the way, this is not a vote on the long-term operations and maintenance, nor is it a vote determining how much the city is going to be contributing in the long haul. This is simply a vote to get through 2016. This is the bare minimum that we can do.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Quincy has moved the full agenda, and the clerk will, oh, there's, so we may, what item would you like to comment on?
Item number 14.
Item number 14. Is it a comment?
It's a comment. Thank you, Madam Chair. Item number 14, my, or, sorry, item number nine is the one that I did want to comment on. I just want to comment on part four of that around the dip funding of $250,000 using that capital improvement fund money for the Commons operations. I know that that is something that there's not a lot of precedent for. I'm reluctant to do it, but it is because my understanding that Councilmember Frye is actually leading on a policy, which I'm very thankful for, around trying to find more opportunities for us to invest in capital infrastructure for development, because I know it's a topic that a number of my colleagues are interested in and have expressed interest to the mayor's office about seeing more dip funding, that I am willing to support this today. I think it's clearly a huge need, though we all have a lot of development going on in our wards, a lot of projects where, if we're able to bring some public dollars to the public space, that we're more able to secure private investment in our communities. And so, I think that hopefully, going forward, we'll see that in the mayor's budget and through policy change here on the council, and I appreciate the leadership of Councilmember Frye on that. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no further comment, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye, no on number nine.
Kano.
Aye, no on number nine.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye, on all items except no on number nine.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Vice President Glidden.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes in the report except for item number nine, which has three nays.
Thank you. Next, we have the Zoning and Planning Report presented by the chair of that committee, Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have three items from the Zoning and Planning Committee. Item number one is vacation as part of an alley for Church of St. Albert the Great. Item number two is a rezoning to allow for a six-story building as part of an apartment project at 622 15th Street East. And item number three is updating our zoning code to pass regulations for establishments that provide free food, clothing, and services. This is modernizing what used to be controlled only through missions, so allowing for folks to get these few services, food, clothing, and some services outside of places where they are allowed to stay for the whole day, and I will move those three items.
Thank you. And clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Vice President Glidden.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
All right. Next, we have resolutions. Item number one is the 2016 National Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Day Honorary Resolution. And all in, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? That item is adopted. Item number two is the Hill and Lake Press Honorary Resolution. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? That is adopted. Item number three is the 2016 Older Americans Month Honorary Resolution. All in approval, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? That is adopted. And next, we have the 2016 Pride Honorary Resolution. Any discussion on that? Councilmember Quincy?
Thank you, Madam President, or Vice President. The resolution for the 2016 Pride Honorary Resolution, of course, is naming June GLBT and Pride Month, which is something we've been happily doing as a tradition in the city for a number of years now. Just wanted to note that the reason we're doing it as quickly as we are now is to make sure that the bridge lighting process is in place, and so that will be done and lit on the Friday and Saturday of Pride Weekend, and I hope to have a more fulsome presentation on this topic later in the month of May. Thank you.
In June, I think. All right. Seeing no further discussion, all in approval, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Next, we have the Haitian Flag Day Honorary Resolution. All in approval of that item, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? And the, all resolutions have been adopted. Next, we have one item, one item in unfinished business. This is the prevailing wage requirements for public improvement contracts ordinance, and I am going to move to postpone this one additional cycle. We have had a lot of people out of town who needed, were the ones who needed to talk together about final language tweaks. Any discussion on that item? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? That is adopted. Next, we have new business, and we have one item here. It is a split zoning ordinance. Councilmember Andrew Johnson gives notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting of the city council the subject matter of an ordinance amending Title 20, Chapter 535 of the Minneapolis Code of Ordinances relating to zoning code, regulations of general applicability, amending regulations for lots containing two or more zoning classifications. And as that is a notice, no vote is required. Next, we have announcements. Any announcements? Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Not this weekend, but next weekend will be the 21st Annual Art of World in Northeast Minneapolis, our premier arts district, as ranked by several magazines. Starts on Friday, ends on Sunday, and this year, just because we want to keep up with the times, there's now a new app, an Art of World app, and you can go to the Northeast Minneapolis, so N-E-M-M-A-A.org, and to get that app, to make it even a much more pleasant experience.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam Vice President.